The October 14th, 2013 meeting of the East Penn School District Board of School Directors, included by a good order, please rise and join you.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, this is your attorney of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda tonight, a request to address the board, I'll remind the addresses that our policy is for three minutes, and the person I have is Jessica Hughes of McCunchee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. While I must admit, I have not followed the activities of Mr. Solz until recently, the information that I have come across in my search of as a parent and taxpayer, I find deeply concerning. Mr. Solz himself openly admits in a recent self-published blog to numerous behaviors that I, as well as others, would deem as inappropriate and inexcusable for a professional in a leadership position such as a school board member. He admits to contacting minor girls as later than age as 24. He admits that while pursuing a 16-year-old girl, that he was dating a 15-year-old Penn State student for four months. And while he claims this relationship was not sexual in nature, we are forced to simply take his word on this. He seems to have no concern or remorse, other than the perceived political conflict of interest. I do understand that he made the choice to delete the teen spot account, but he only made this choice after he learned it had been found an obviously new potential risk imposed by his political career by being viewed as improper and unprofessional. It is certainly not the first time that we have seen controversy surrounding Mr. Solz, and yet his response to recent events were to make jokes and poke fun at the situation. For example, why I ever thought a shirtless picture was a good idea, ew. Something that many are finding deeply disturbing, and certainly we are not laughing. In light of the recent information that has been on the internet regarding Mr. Solz's personal life, regardless of how this information came to be public knowledge, is why I am asking that he immediately resign from his position and allow the district to deal with the children's decisions regarding the children, rather than someone who this continued nonsense seems to be surrounding. Thank you.
The next person I have is Hillary Smith of McCunchee.
Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm a parent who stayed home long to three kids in the district. Part of the reason I decided to stay home with my kids was that even in the age of background checks, I realized that the most dangerous people around children are often the ones that haven't been caught. They are manipulative and involve parents into a false sense of security and comfort. The reason I am here tonight is to request that Director Julian Solz resign his position on the school board in light of recent information. He has publicly and unapologetically acknowledged having a romantic relationship with a girl while she was a student at Imaeus High School, and he was an elected school board director. He has also admitted to other questionable interactions with minors while he was a sitting school board director as late as March of last year. I do not know if any of those interactions broke the law. That's a matter for law enforcement and the courts to determine. I am requesting that the superintendent ensure that a full investigation is conducted by whatever law enforcement agencies are appropriate. The East Penn School District has a policy of non-tolerance when it comes to proper conduct towards its students and staff. If Mr. Solz refuses to resign his position, despite publicly admitting that he did in fact have a romantic relationship with a student, I respectfully request that the board consider a motion to vote to remove Mr. Solz from his position on the board. His actions of pursuing a relationship with a minor were a gross neglect of his duties as a school board director, and his actions show that he is not morally capable of the judgment necessary to deal with sensitive matters regarding improper conduct with students. School administrators are trained to recognize this behavior and act to prevent kids from being harmed. Many times those matters involve students who are at risk of exploitation and susceptible to manipulation and grooming by adults that would take advantage of them. Having someone on the school board that thinks there is nothing wrong with an adult authority dating a student can bring us to question the entire school district's ability to act in these matters. His continued presence on board not only exposes the district to lawsuits not only from behavior, but also from suspicion that the board may not be able to act effectively in sensitive matters. Mr. Solz, why should we as parents believe a single word you say? Because you admitted to what was already known after someone made it public? So we should just accept that this is all that happened and it'll never happen again? Do you really think the parents in the school district are that stupid? Mr. Solz, why don't you do the right thing for once and resign and spare the school district and further embarrassen the rest of us from exposure to your disgusting behavior?
Thank you. The next request to address the board I have is Kirsten Burkhardt of Bedlam.
Julian Solz's actions while a member of the East Penn School Board are disgusting and immoral. Now we should no longer be a member of this school board, we should never be allowed to be around the children again. First, I find it disgusting you're trying to turn this into a political attack. It is not. There are members of both parties here that want you wrong, or want you gone. Uh, my cousins go to the school district here, so that's why I'm here, and I'm just a concerned citizen. The issue here, Julian, is your teen spot profile, which, first of all, that shirtless picture is not an "oh, I'm shirtless on the beach" type of summer picture. It's a disgusting, pervert creeper picture. You also, what you failed to mention in this article, is that you had a second profile named Jewel Solz, which was terminated for improper behavior. The picture is there, do not shake your head at me, the picture is there. You had another profile which is terminated for improper behavior, but yet you say you were doing nothing wrong. I guarantee you, if the police would investigate this matter, they would find something wrong. No adult should have a shirtless teen spot profile picture. That's just the truth. You were 20 years old, and you were messaging 17-year-olds saying, "Hey, baby doll, you shouldn't text me." And you were friends with a 13-year-old girl on there. How is that acceptable at all? Admitting your teen spot profile is disgusting isn't even the biggest issue here. The biggest issue is you're 20 years old and a school board member and dating a 15-year-old student in this school district. Your relationship that began with a girl underage that became sexual once you were older, that, my friend, is typical sexual, gender, grooming behavior. I also highly doubt you dated her for four months and didn't have sex, but again, we have to take your word for you. I think it's funny that you once got books banned from the curriculum, which you said you would not feel comfortable reading this content out loud in front of me. If I did, I'd be charged with corruption and morals of minors. Isn't that ironic, corruption and morals of minors? How is a 20-year-old member of the school board dating a 15-year-old for four months not corruption of minors? Mr. Solz, why are you even on the board? Are you here to support local education like the rest of us, or are you here to meet underage chicks? Any female East Penn School District student is clearly a target for you, and we should all be constrained and deterred. You should resign. A real man would resign. A meal for it, a real man would truly acknowledge his issues, which you some have, sometimes do on your Twitter account, and sometimes attack other people. You, sir, I hope the police investigate you. I do hope we get to help you clearly, because, you know, there's some serious issues going on here. And the only positive in all this, Julian, is your future political ideas and any career you thought you had are over. You'll never hold office again, buddy, and for that, I'm happy. To the school board, I hope you do whatever is in your power to make this monitor, to remove from the school board, or have the police or state look into this. A 20-year-old should not date a 15-year-old student. I'm sure you don't even have in your laws that a school board member shouldn't date a student. That's just something that probably never came up before, but should. If there's a way to vote about it, do so. Imagine if this creep was dating your 15-year-old daughter. How would you feel? He is a threat to the community and young girls everywhere, and needs to be treated as such until he gets a helping service. Thank you.
The last request I have to address the board is Kevin Kelly of Imaeus.
Hello. I was very saddened and disturbed recently today reading the article in the Morning Call. I quickly made a decision to come out here to the school board, because I've been reading a lot about what's been happening at school board meetings over the course of the past couple of years, and certainly the school board has a lot of political disagreements, and I understand that. I understand that Mr. Solz has felt that a lot of the political, a lot of these attacks that have come across have been political in nature. I disagree with that, but I understand where that may be coming from. Calls for his resignation back in the spring, I didn't necessarily agree with those calls for his resignation, although I thought his comments were very inappropriate, and they certainly disturbed me. But I think this is to another nature. We're talking about involving our high school children. I'm a dad, I have two daughters, so it's disturbing to me to think a sitting school board member here would be involved with a school student, whether it's sexual or not, be involved on a teen dating website that's meant for teenagers, not adults. And he's an example for our community, or at least should be an example for our community, to the example of my daughters. And it's disturbing, and I agree with the previous comments, I agree that we should call for his resignation. I hope you do that, Mr. Solz, because this has really gone beyond the pale. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the requests to address the board that I have. We'll move on to item number three, approval of minutes. I have a motion, please. Discussion of the minutes. None appearing, disperse, let's see, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, minutes are approved. We will now move on to the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Thomas Seidberg.
Thank you, Mr. Ballad. The first thing I want to report on is Lehigh's school study council trip to Boston, working with Boston University. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to do my usual report, but I'll give you an oral report. And I can just tell you, I think Dr. Torma and Mrs. Campbell would agree with me, that trip to shit was just simply outstanding. First of all, being on an excursion with your colleagues and Superintendent Eric from Parkland, Southern Lehigh, Whitehall, Panhandle, Sockeye Valley, so all this getting together, and I think there's a special time when you have time to talk about lots of issues with your colleagues. So that is almost irmeasurable in what we gain when we have a chance to communicate. But also, what we found out in the sessions we had working with Boston University is that we came away with the great admiration for the Department of Education in Massachusetts. See, they're a race to the top state, and probably in the game of school improvement, teacher evaluations, probably about 18 months to a year in front of Pennsylvania. And the two representatives we heard from the Department of Education were just phenomenal. And I can tell you honestly, without being negative, that the support that's given to schools in Massachusetts is a lot better than the support we're receiving at this point from PVE on lots of fronts. Curiously enough, we also had a session with an individual, Dr. Montero, who's been appointed by the governor of Massachusetts to oversee warrants. Massachusetts is a school district that's failed in six out of six components. And so hearing what they're doing with that school district was very insightful, because of all the talk in Pennsylvania about some of our urban districts failing, and so again, I think that was outstanding. We then heard from two researchers, lady from the staff that has been with Boston University for almost 40 years, she's evaluated systems in 54 countries, and her doctoral student who gave us an outstanding, almost an hour and a half of statistics in how we can look at value education and what that means in terms of school districts moving forward. Later on the afternoon, we heard from the chief attorney for the superintendent's group in Massachusetts, specifically talking about how we as educators can navigate new laws regarding teacher evaluations, and this attorney had called Jim Buckeye from Pennsylvania to have a discussion. So the actual remarks were telephoned to us. And then we wound up with hearing great information from two school districts who are working very diligently with their staff in developing measurements that will truly measure student growth. The Massachusetts laws will differ from Pennsylvania in that our teacher evaluations will be 50% based on data, 20% based next year on student-level objectives or student learning objectives. And so we heard how two districts were really working with their staff on norming local tests and things like that. So we came away with valuable insights. And then, as always, the last day, we visit the school district, and I will tell you that we came away with Cambridge Latin and Ranch High School, serves about 1,700 students, is an urban district, curiously enough, about 300 students drive their bikes there every day. We learned about Cambridge's control choice. See, their philosophy is that every school should be balanced with economic groups. And so parents, when they register a student, they get a choice of three schools. And you could be living next to a school and attend a school across the city. We really enjoyed our stay at the high school. Interesting concept, what was impressive and knocked our socks off. They have $150 million phys ed facility, indoor track, kind of nice. They had a school bank like we used to have, they had a special area where their media was housed across the street, they had a library that looked like a church, they had about three huge wings, their parks area was phenomenal. But more importantly, in hearing your superintendent talk with great pride, they talked about how they really connect with the city of Cambridge, and how the city really cares about its students. And it was interesting to hear that they spent $27,000 for students in Cambridge educating their students. And the students that served as our guides were really top shows, loved that school, the administrators we heard from, especially the superintendent, were passionate about what was going on in Cambridge. And what we liked were their community connections, and certainly from our end, just one of the partners that we saw in the film clip was Whole Foods. It's a shame that right now, at this point, we don't want to have a chance to work with Whole Foods, but who knows, maybe in the future they'll develop a store here in the Lehigh Valley. So we want to thank you for supporting our attendance. That was certainly a valuable time, and as we look through the documents, we'll forward you some of the more pertinent information we thought, especially in the area of data gathering and data use. So if you want to add anything, Dr. Torma, Mrs. Campbell, I think it was a great, great two and a half days. And first night, we did meet with the dean of the School of Education of Boston University, and really a profound guy, a lot of good things to say. So this was by far one of the best that I've been on, and I've been on many study councils. So probably my last, but I certainly want to thank Dr. Donahue, Lehigh University, for giving us a great experience. Some good news, for it seems like the third year in a row, Willow Lane has been nominated by Delaware Valley Green Building Council in the Lehigh Valley Sustainability Awards. So on Thursday night, we've nominated, I think Dr. Morris is pending, Mr. R, are you going?
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, Mr. Spence and I have conflicts, but we're going to be in a competition for the public project section, which is the best example of the implementation of a sustainable facility design, construction, and management practices. And we're in with Channel 39, Habitat, Lehigh Valley, Bertrand Fox Environmental Center, and the Lehigh Gap Nature Center. So we're anxious to see how well we do on Thursday night. I want to thank Mr. Simmons, Representative Simmons, for sending us a nice letter regarding the fiscal impact of HB House Bill 618 that was passed. I think you all got a copy of Mr. Simmons's letter. It looks like, according to his calculations, we might be saving $177,281 next year with some sharpening of the knives regarding cyber and charter schools. I don't know yet the impact of any monies that would be put into access regarding excess fund balances from cybers and person-order charter school. The only thing I would say is thank you, but I'll also say go hard work and look at, looking at person-order charter schools as well. So we would certainly encourage them to do that at work. Want to remind the board that we're going to have a reception for our National Merit semifinals on the next board meeting, I think it's October 28th at 6 o'clock. And I also received a communication from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. The following students at Imaeus High School have reached commended status. Grace Bova, Andrew Chen, Peter Conway, Erin Die, Nancy Dordall, Joanna Hawkins, Mark Yurston, Gillian Schwartz, and Robert Lang. And we want to congratulate those students for reaching commended status. Want to remind the board that the annual Laura McCunchee Little School Veterans Day program will be held November 11th. If you haven't attended, it's a very special day, and Mrs. Vincent and her staff do a wonderful job of honoring our veterans. Also want to take any time to remind the board that our annual Thanksgiving luncheon will be held November 14th in a variety of locations. Last year, we served almost 1,000 people in the community, so we're looking forward to sustaining that wonderful program. I would be remiss if I did not note, we want to congratulate Coach Sue Stamen Woods, Sue Woods Stamen, for winning her 800th, and that's a remarkable record. Our girls still, our team is still undefeated. Not going for a mic up. What can I tell you? Sue does a great job. And here's a retired teacher giving her time for her team, who's still undefeated, and let's just hope that they go and win a state championship this year. Also, I have to confess, I am a golfer. I love golf, I play a lot of golf. So for me to tell you what amazing tonight, and tell you about the accomplishments of the Imaeus High School golfing, it's just sensational. I want to congratulate Mike Mahalik and his team for going through an undefeated season. They'll be playing a professional team with Sound Prep and Howdyton Country Club, which makes their, what their students are members, you know, in the Hunter Valley Country Club, certainly a club outside of Philadelphia, so our task is Herculean. But I don't know if you know much about the Lehigh Valley Amateur, but Grant Shoemaker, a 17-year-old, faced it up with adults and that turned into the youngest person ever to win the Lehigh Valley Amateur. And then a week later, he came back and won District 11 Voice Title. Also, Kelsey Patterson won the girls' title, and our boy, and our team won the team title. I think it's the first time in District 11 after it was a clean sweep. And also, the Lehigh Valley Amateur Junior Championship was won by Max Harrington. So congratulations again to Mr. Mahalik and our sensational Imaeus High School golfers. And we thank Brookside Country Club for hosting our players, we want to thank them as well. Now, I just want to, Mr. Ball, can you come up? I want to show the board a couple of things about the school performance profile. I don't have the opportunity to look at any of our school profiles. I will just say this, that the last three weeks, when Dr. Torma and Mrs. Campbell and I have to make a split decision on a Boston sidewalk, I don't think that's the best way to make decisions. So it was kind of chaotic the last two weeks, and I think you probably have read the newspaper reports about some issues with data accuracy. We made the decision to be conservative and to withhold our PLOS data at this point, so we're absolutely certain that our data is accurate. But I think I sent you the compilations, and I'll say publicly, I think our high school's going to line up at 92.6 in the long run, but that's not the important thing. I think what I want to show you are some components of the school performance profile. There's a lot of information, I think some of you may not know that you have. So Michael, you want to hit, you want to hit here? So anyone, any board member, any citizen, any staff member can hit the profiles. So I just checked them earlier last weekend. That's my, Michael's note as a school administrator. So what you do is get this, go to the PVE website, click on school performance profile, come up and it's pull down, menu. So you go to county and district, select the county, so the Lehigh County, you want to keep going down, Mr., we're going to go to an actual East Penn, there you go. So let's go to Shoemaker School, why not? Let's go to that, good place to start. All right, now, more importantly, what I want to show the board are some basic information. This is the, this is the, this is the homepage. And please take a long look at the categories, because there's much more information on this than I think most people realize. For instance, all sorts of information about staffing in that particular school, what kind of staff do we have in terms of service. Also, on the other, on the other side, could you scroll up, Mr. Ball, please? What are demographics look for each school? Now, I do want to give a commercial, and if you recall, two years ago, we had our e-folio system copyrighted. I want to tell you that, I hope the state stole Dr. Torma's ideas, because these are all the kind of things that we have on our website now. And so, in fact, the state came and looked at some of the stuff that we were doing two years ago. I'm going to take commend Dr. Torma and her hard work for the kind of cutting-edge transparency that we were doing two or three years ago. But here, I think scroll down. I think, I think if you can hit school safety, Mrs. Thompson, I think you would ask me about certain information regarding discipline. I think if you take a look at the site, you can see everything you wanted and more regarding all the statistics you asked. So if you go on here, Michael, could you hit school safety? So you catch that? School safety, look under historic data, hit 212, 2012. Now, we have submitted our report for 2013. I don't know when it's going to go up in the state, but it'll walk along. So I know you asked me for three years of data, I think it's 10 years of data there. So you want to look at it, and if you hit public school report, go down to E, it is penned, and our report will come up. This is the work that we do every year, and we'll just scroll down. So here's the first one, unfortunately, it starts with arrest, but I'm not going to make a joke. I think having more than one student arrested is one too many. But anyway, nonetheless, there's the data. You can go back and see what the data looks like every year. Scroll down, Michael, I want to show some of the other categories here. So when people want to know what's gone on in the school district, you can get this. Every district in Pennsylvania, not every school, they don't print the data in my school, but my district. So here are all the things that we reported, and the percentages are the total number of incidences, so you can see that 8% of the incidences were relative to, what is that, Michael? To bullying, okay? So you want to know how many bullying incidences we have? All that data is there, every school district in the state of Pennsylvania. Keep going down. Michael, scroll down a little bit. Okay, hold on. So incidences regarding, here in the district, assign, that number's not right, I think it's 14, we had 14 arrests, right, Mr. Dr. Mary?
Did you have strength?
Yeah.
Did you have physical, yeah?
Yep.
There we go.
There we go, it's over there. Okay, now, keep going down, and let's scroll down a little bit further, look at some of this data. Here, weapon detection. Parents always want to know about what we do with weapons. Well, here's what we detected over at least last year, the year before. So we've detected three weapons. Keep going down. And then offender demographics, like what their ages. So I think this will give you an idea of how many elementary, how many secondary students. And if you go down to the bottom, you'll see the number of out-of-school suspensions we've had, and at what age level, what grade level. And obviously, you can tell the high school, it goes from like, that's a low grade, and you can sort of pick up the little schools by their ages. So I think everything you want is on that report, okay? So that would be, now, if you want to go back over, Michael, to the next section, which is the is the actual school.
On this page? Go back.
Go back, and then we want to look at the actual scores, so the board can get an idea of, this is the demographic information. So remember, on the first page, that's where you find all the information you learned about about students. Now, this next page, under African Performance, this will give you all the specific calculations about why Shoemaker, in this particular point, scored a ninety-four. And you can see each chart. The other thing, I think somebody asked me about, the school district and tenants. If you keep scrolling down, there you see that four, right here. Shoemaker School has ninety-six point four percent tenants rate. And the things that we were upset about is the state withheld promotion and tenants retention rate. So we really believe that's the differential why Shoemaker was ninety-four and a ninety-eight point six. So by the state restores that data, hopefully after January, your scores will go back up to ninety-four point six. So I just want you to see what that looks like if you haven't looked at it. I would encourage every board member, every member of the community, to look at it. And remind you, with all due respect, that one single school does not dictate how successful a particular school is. It's just simply a little bit more of a snapshot, but it's one indicator alone of how successful our schools are, okay? And as you said, one of our goals, our school district, we have four of them this year, one of our goals is to come back and to tell you what our schools are doing with this data and how it will affect our overall improvement plans for each school. Mr. Bowden, that's all. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments about your side progress report? Not seeing any. We'll move on to the personnel items, now item number two. Can I have a motion, please?
Come in.
Second. Any discussion of the personnel items? Nonappearing, Ms. Bert, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Doncha.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Dr. Bowden.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Doncha.
Aye.
Listen to others.
Aye.
All right, we have reports from other educational entities. Karen, can I intermediate, Miss Ford?
Thank you very much, Karen. In addition to providing service support to part of the higher community, creates a range of programs and services to the districts to assist in various issues. I'd like to share with you that PDE has granted this CLIU initial program approval for post-baccalaureate certification, mathematics certification program. So this is a program for people who have degrees but not teaching degrees to come and learn the pedagogy of teaching mathematics. And the program is designed specifically to meet Pennsylvania requirements of certification. Additionally, CLIU, in partnership with PDE, has been tasked with assembling a workforce to create a STEM endorsement framework guideline, which will document a teacher's knowledge in new and emerging areas having to do STEM. Additionally, Dr. Seidberger has been talking about the necessity for Phil certification. CLIU will launch a new Pennsylvania-inspired leadership Phil course in October, engaging the community for student achievement, to empower school leaders through evaluation of best practices engaged in a variety of case studies, successful programs, to help prepare an action plan with intensive community engagement. And additionally, the Curriculum Instructional Education Technologies Department of CLIU will implement a teacher features, which is a series of free after-school professional development sessions for teachers who are new to the profession, teachers of one to three years of experience, to give them strategies, tips, tricks, and ways to share information. Again, that course is fully charged and is designed to help teachers become better teachers. And so that is, we have a ten minute board.
Thank you, Miss Ford. Are there any questions for Miss Ford? Nonappearing, we'll move on to Lehigh Career Technical Insecurities, beside.
I have a brief, a couple of brief things, just to let everybody know about. LCTI has put in their own quality system and do in fact, we used to use ISO nine thousand and one. It became very costly. What LCTI did was a timeline and a task chart, and the highlights of the system is the continuous improvement, record retention, document control, and customer satisfaction. And I wanted to mention that LCTI has their school improvement plan in place, and they have three objectives they're going towards. The first one is to build a relationship capacity through development of professional learning community that is committed to working together in a continuous improvement process to enhance student achievement. Number two is to become knowledgeable in the process to analyze multiple forms of data through action research to collaboratively examine educational practices for the purposes of improving teaching and learning. And number three is to engage students as active participants in the teaching learning process through the development of an individual learning plan based on performance-related data. And we also have what we call the SIP team members from LCTI that are involved with this. And my final thing I'd just like to mention is that we watched a video, there's a video contest right now for eighth graders who are interested in the manufacturing companies. And basically, they can go to a manufacturing company, say what's cool about that. And the example that we saw was for Martin Guitar. And if you want more information on this, you can go to a dream it, do it, make it dot com. And I think I hit everything, but I didn't, let me know.
Thank you, beside. Any comments or questions, beside? Nonappearing, thank you. In the legislative area, we've entered the silly season of legislation again. There are some things percolating around, some small unfunded mandates that are coming out. I don't think they're worth talking about, yet they haven't gotten much support. But there is a couple of items that, well, which Dr. Seidberger alluded to, the House has passed a bill correcting the double dip for cyber charter schools. Representative Simmons sent us that letter. However, it does not cover brick and mortar's charter schools, double dip of pension. And it still doesn't straighten out all of the payments to any of the charter schools. And I commend Representative Simmons for his efforts and encourage him to keep it up, because we still need a lot more. On the property tax reform issue, there's been some movement, but it's very, very confused. The House passed a bill, House Bill eleven eighty-nine, which was a bill to permit local school districts to change their property tax over to a number of other taxes, which included earned income taxes and business privileges taxes, among others, so that they could move property tax from one to the other, also with restrictions on how much the new taxes could be raised. But it didn't require school districts to remove all of their property tax. And in the process of passing that bill, someone tried to amend it to replace the language of that bill with the language of House Bill Seventy-Six, which is the Property Tax Elimination Act. And that amendment failed resoundingly. So the House Bill Seventy-Six appears to be dead, at least in the House. Now, there's a companion bill in the Senate, which the Senate is prepared to debate. And it's not clear what's going to happen between Senate Bill Seventy-Six and House Bill eleven eighty-nine, which has been sent to the Senate. One of the problems with House Bill Seventy-Six is the independent fiscal office report that said that the numbers don't add up. The amount of taxes collected under House Bill Seventy-Six, as it is now according to independent fiscal office, was slightly over ten billion dollars, when currently twelve point five billion dollars is being collected by school districts in property tax. So the independent fiscal office said the numbers didn't add up. And I think that swayed a number of House members into voting against the amendment when it appeared. So right now, the only property tax bill that has been passed by either House is House Bill eleven eighty-nine, which is a tax shifting bill, which is at the local level again, doesn't do anything about unfunded mandates or the state share of public education costs. So it's still not clear if anything's going to happen there. People are talking about what might happen, but it's not very clear. So that's primarily what's going on in the legislative area at this time. Is there any comment or question? Okay, nonappearing, we'll move on to item one of Business Operations. Can I have a motion, please? So move. Second. Any discussion? Ms. Thompson?
I would just point out that I believe it's named because of not having the account code on this form summary.
Any other commentary on this item? Ms. Bert, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Doncha.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Dr. Bowden.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Bowden.
Aye.
And I was more extension.
Okay, is there any objection to combining items two through seven, including the agenda? Nonappearing, can I have a motion to that effect, please? So move.
Okay.
Discussion? Ms. Thompson?
I have a question on the budget transfers, which is number five. Are these for budget gift cards or something else? And are they then corrective actions due to be audited?
Not corrective actions so much, except that there might have been some things that we moved around that daughters thought might have been appropriate for this year. There's always a discussion in here, and this is based on recommendations to make the books.
So they actually get transferred to the fourth and fourth budget, but not into line in last year's, or some of the?
Yeah, it's more or less a reconciliation. It's kind of a normal process. Anything else, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, that's all, thank you.
Any other questions? Nonappearing, Ms. Bert, will you call a roll, please?
Dr. Bowden.
Aye.
Mr. Paulakana.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Doncha.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Bowden.
Aye.
Ms. Doncha.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Doncha.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Mr. Stoltz, I believe you had something you wanted to say?
Yes. I'd like to start by apologizing to my fellow board members for the three rings that this sometimes my passing caused tonight. Since the controversy that arose around some of my remarks on Twitter in, say, March April, I've been stopped at work. I've had a picture of my parents' home posted on a website. I've had hateful anonymous text messages sent by my former fiancé. And these online personalities have literally stopped my every online move going back over a decade. I must admit, I've been maintaining a Teenspot account for as long as I did, and even those who brought it up admit that I've been acting for over a year. It was an error in judgment. I never claimed to be perfect. The only people that I ever had any real life contact with were well over the age of eighteen. The last time I went out on a date with anyone from Teenspot was in late twenty-eleven. Was in late twenty-eleven, she was twenty years old. All of this can also be found in my blog. With regards to dating a niece/then student, yes, I did, back in two thousand and eight. I met her not on teenspot.com, but at a party held by some mutual friends and head of school year I get to. I dated her with the full consent of her parents. My only errand judge.
Ms. Jankinsen.
Outdated fifteen.
Excuse me, please, allow Ms. Stoltz to continue.
My only errand judge and peer was choosing at the time to remain on the school board rather than resigning instead in the last twenty years.
So resigned now.
Please, the audience will remain quiet. We'll next go to the statements.
Thank you. I've never been in my life so in love and happy with anyone. I'm truly blessed to be with her and have her in my life. Thank you.
Ms. Stoltz, is there any other business to come before the assembly this evening? Nonappearing. We had an executive session prior to this meeting, where we discussed real estate, personnel, locations, and that's it. Our next meeting is on Monday, October twenty-eighth.